I guess I have to lock down.
Okay, so I have, I put together a really quick site plan for tonight's meeting if I can find how to show it to you. I didn't just remember. And I can read to you what Nicole and I had talked about putting in the grant application.
Can I say, if it's through the snowmobile though, I think that's a, does through the bridges. So that's what I'm thinking if they need a new bridge and they're going to use it for snowmobile, they usually.
I don't think that that bridge, that.
They have, they have to build a new one, correct?
Right. But I don't think that that is the vast trail is actually through the Coles Point.
And that's not the one they would use?
No, I think they're going to come through thirty. It's going to come down from the state park.
Right.
To thirty.
There is one.
Oh, have to come somewhere else, yeah.
And they just haven't expanded that down in years. But at the last meeting, it was brought up to expand the trail all the way to Coles Point.
That makes sense for them, yeah.
But I'm thinking if the bridge is wider, if someone on the lake could come across onto Coles Point Road and then go down the trail to us if we had a larger bridge there.
Um, so I mean, the, the conversation around the vast, you know, the local organization making improvements, Nicole already investing in the property and the recreational assets. And, you know, all of the planning work that Holtmead has done over the past two years through RERC, the town, the trails, all of this type of thing is what I would use in the grant applications. I do know, I've been asked at one point specifically about kayaks being at the, available for use, I think it was at the high school last summer, and just being more readily accessible to the community. One of the things that's not accessible in the way that is being proposed here. So it's, it's really an opportunity to kind of expand on the idea of Holtmead as a recreation destination that has additional offerings in addition to the mountain biking and other, you know, the state park and, and country club and all that sort of thing. So we'll start with the, uh, this is just a really quick map that I put together from VCGI, showing the general area. I can't show all of it at once, so we'll just focus on the Coles Point Country Store parcel right here. So I'm just going to trace the boundary, goes down here. This is the channel and then over to Coles Point and then it makes a little jog back. So hydroraking the channel is the main part of the project. It's about nine hundred feet to the open water. So that is the first estimate that we would be, uh, you know, working on. I have a contact, I have a contractor lined up who did the hydroraking between the, forgive me, is it the big?
Perd Cliff and, and where we are.
Thank you. Um, that was in 2013. So, um, and those permits have been identified. There are, let's see, at least one, two, there's two permits for this. And then as part of the other part of the project, there was likely a local permit that would be needed as well. So hydroraking the channel, here it would be cleaning out the dip stream, which is, um, this is on the property of Coles Point Country Store as it follows through here. So there's a permit for that as well. Uh, this is generally the area of the accessible bridge that is in place. And Nicole and I had talked about making it accessible for people that are crossing from the street, coming up the channel or using it otherwise, maybe in the winter. This area right here is sort of your unloading zone where people would likely just pull kayaks up. There could be a natural play area to help create a bit of a destination at this business area, the business location. And then over here is the country store itself. And in addition to the structure is proposed as part of the project to serve as storage and seasonal, allow seasonal service for the business.
Sarah, none of that land in the back end loading zone is wetlands?
So the wetlands, DEC has sent us a general map of the location. The wetlands are up in this area in further away. It's class two wetlands, so there's a fifty foot buffer around a class two wetlands. Anything that was dredged or pulled up out of here would be, need to be part of the scope of work, but it would need to be disposed of properly outside of the wetland area. So it likely wouldn't be in any of this area. But so I'll just go through quickly other elements that we're talking about putting in the project. So hydroraking the channel, uh, cleaning the dip stream, a new bridge, potentially environmental lighting for safety and crossing from Coles Point of the, you know, downlit lighting. Nothing too bright in that area. And a landing area for the site. Potentially some pruning of the existing trees to clean it up a little bit, a raking of the area. There may be some shoreline plantings proposed along the area because that is a best management practice for caring for lakes. So I've got a few, a little bit of information with DEC about how to put together a, like, a very modest management plan for the, for the board of. Potentially some wave finding science to identify the business and then to, to people who are on the water. And then the winter storage area that we talked about, which is essentially a screened in porch attached to the building approximately twenty by forty. Amenities that we would include would be the kayaks themselves, life vest, kayak racks, potentially picnic tables near the landing zone. And then potentially play structures or, or not structure, but play amenities to create a natural play area in that area. Wouldn't be anything built up.
So we'd have to have a building for the equipment, the kayaks and the?
So that would be, I think the idea was to use it as a seasonal storage for new, for the addition on the building. So in the summertime, that addition would be a, a service area that kind of overlooks the Gulf course right there. And then in the winter, it would be used for storage.
For storage.
Yeah.
And they would be in charge of getting the kayak? I just note that there was a, a thing with insurance too for kayaks and those going out. So that would be my question I would have.
We'd do a waiver and we'd add probably a rider to our insurance policy, our existing policies.
What's wrong with giving a pass to the library? Just know that we looked into part of that, so we'll probably have to come from you at the store, right?
Yeah. And, and I think the only other piece to it is really the project management and administration of the grant. Borac does not have a match at all this year, so, um, that's good news. They also allow money for administrative fees or administration of the grant, which Holtmead didn't have this last time. So for the most part, Jonas and I had administered that grant and done all of the reporting and Paul's helped me too. You can add up to ten percent for administration of the grant. You can also add in municipal project management, which is what I would propose that I would serve that role for the municipality and add in fees to, to help manage that. And Nicole and I would, would do that jointly. So that would be a line item in the project.
What's your feeling, Sarah? Because we've gotten one before. Do you feel like it's good that we've had that opportunity?
I do, yeah, absolutely. This is a pretty big project. I wouldn't be really forwarding it as quickly as I am if I didn't think it had a good chance. Holtmead has done so much planning that there, there is a lot to write a grant application from. Nicole is very organized, has a lot of great ideas, is a new investor in the community, has already started investing in the site. And I think that they would look to that as well as something that was feasible to implement in the timeframe.
I think getting a lake involved would be a really great thing because that's where a lot of them came from over the years, yeah.
And everyone on the channel on the lake are like this.
Yeah.
Because they've talked about doing it, yeah, because they did it about ten years ago and they all chipped in and paid for it.
That's the part I see isn't really going to be expensive. That's the part to get, it seems like a lot of money, but I bet that.
It was like twelve thousand last time we did it. They each chipped in about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a lot now.
What did Jeremy say? It was thirty?
I think we're at thirty already just for hydroraking of the channel.
Yeah, that's going to be your big, yeah, especially then you have to get rid of it. So it's going to be a matter of.
See, last time they didn't do that.
Get rid of it, yeah.
If it wasn't so soon.
No.
They just put it on the people's shore on the statement. Some people are going to go out of there.
That's a plan.
So yes, we could talk about.
Did you ever figure out about operation and maintenance of that?
Of the channel?
Like if, if the town is, is there a responsibility for it to maintain it?
I, I have not asked that. I haven't followed up with the contractor specifically about like the life of the, um, of, yeah, of the work. I do think it's something that you could put in, like, an agreement with, you know, this is expected to last for this long. I mean, the other thing that I need to figure out is, you know, how deep you actually need it to be for a kayak canoe to get through. And maybe that you just do it once in the last for a certain period. But I haven't called the contractor yet for those types of estimates because I didn't, I didn't want to get too far down the line without having a sponsor. But I did, those are the types of things that we would address in a management, uh, plan, which I think could be pretty straightforward in terms of how often it needs to be done or if there's any other maintenance that needs to be done. And then I think the town also could enter, you know, if needed, could draft a memorandum of agreement with Nicole. She might be willing to enter into that regarding maintenance, yeah.
And maybe that's why we go to the landowners along the channel and say, hey, we have the grant to report it to do the first time. Are you, would you commit to doing it again in X amount of years?
Just guarantee it will have to be done again just because I know.
Guaranteed.
Yeah, yeah.
So who have you decided owns that, that split of the board?
So I ask the question of DEC because on land trails, you do have to have those agreements in place. And they've written back to me that the, essentially what happens is that the landowners are notified through the permit process. We would need to get a lake encroachment permit and a stream alteration permit. Probably not a wetland permit, but it's a question mark at this point. And then locally, there would be a flood plain regulation review. And essentially the, there is no ownership of the water. I mean, the waters are public waters in the state of Vermont. So we do not need to request, we do not need approval of all the abutting properties to hydrorate the channel.
I've been told that's not part of the lake. Because it's manmade. That's the history that I know.
I've spoken with three or four people at DEC yet and that has not come up.
That's not.
No, no.
Because you see that red building? Black pass sitting?
Which one?
The one?
The big white one?
Yeah.
This one?
That used to be in the reef. People would go down the canal because they can't do.
Look at the moon.
Buy gas and stuff.
Last year in the Mariana.
That's the original marine, Eddie's Marine.
So in our D, my attorney, Tracy Opwin, said that we had access to a beach that was along there at one point.
Yeah, you would think that you would have it, yeah.
Beach. And she thinks it's at the very end of the channel where there's going to double wide added sets. Do you get access to a beach that was down there?
Is there a beach area there?
Yeah, I, I have no knowledge of that.
Probably just still been out.
Well, I've never been down there, I mean, on this property because, does the trail go to Coles Point?
Trails all the way across here when you start here. This is where they walk from. They go like here, they walk all the way. All the, that's all the kids, some kids, you can come all the way to that one, walking path. It's either she didn't go back or that was, that was a big.
I don't see where the rest trail connects to it, but.
It's, the trail is pretty well maintained as it is. The walking trail.
Yeah. And probably when it's open, even the spring, they're going to get more because that's going to get used a lot.
Trail's not opening really well right now. We had our cleanup dive.
Yeah.
Cleaned it up and it goes, I mean, we have people walking across the beach, all respect.
That was pretty wide. That was pretty decent, yeah. Yeah, it's just the longer piece.
I mean, there is potential to add some sort of nature trail out there too because of the wetlands. Some sort of educational little nature trail that could be added in there.
So but it couldn't be, you know, Lakes St. Catherine, but yeah.
So my, my biggest concern would be that town is going to be as funny. But that can be built into the agreement.
We start generating revenue there. I can afford to be.
And besides that, what are you raising? I don't really see any bad side of it.
Well, I think it's great, yeah.
The second cap in from the end of us, they have a dock with a boat. So people along the channel already have boats. It's just pretty, it gets really narrow down to the last. It's pretty mucky. Is it this one, Nicole? They have a dock with a boat. Okay. Yeah, it's pretty mucky.
And there's a new house up there. Just got built there. I don't see it.
Yeah, this is pretty old area. It's probably been on there.
Yeah.
So.
He, 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 he used to be a main part of the lake, but.
So, so Sarah, what do you need us to do? Do you need to get back to us when you get the money's behind it and let us know and we?
Well, I think at this point we need to know how the SLAC board feels about serving as a sponsor. There, I think that, you know, as I get further into the project, if there is some criteria that I've missed, I've looked quite a few times for, you know, ongoing, for a length of time that, you know, the trails need to be in place or any kind of like ongoing maintenance that's required through the grant. I haven't found anything yet. But I think if we, if the SLAC board is generally in favor of serving as a, as the sponsor, I can then go ahead and look a little bit more deeply and put the project together and make sure if there is anything of that sort that would encumber the town financially at any point, I would bring it back to the SLAC board. But other than that, um, you know, if, I guess, you know, we'd really like to have the town sponsor it, but we will look for a, a different sponsor if that wasn't feasible.
But what do you think, Alan? Mark, what do you think?
I would be in favor as long as there's no downstream.
Okay, I think it's great, yeah. The more we get, kind of back over. I think the only thing, only other suggestion we just have is, I know Lakes St. Catherine rents out canoes and kayaks and stuff too. My only big thing was we don't want to take them. Somehow you can work, you work together or whatever.
And what we're willing to offer is the free to town residential.
Yeah.
And if we have no way to manage it would be to do it through the library. Like in Rutland, they can go check out, uh, snowshoes through the library.
We do that with skates and stuff here. We do too, but yeah.
I don't realize that Lakes St. Catherine have, have any.
Yeah, we used to use it for the whole time with the, the, um, always to run the snack bar. Used to rent out, yeah, keys and cards. Something with insurance, but it was, yeah.
When you say sponsor, that like what the town did for the pavilion, the same concept, you like signed for it, but then we had to find the contractors and all that kind of stuff. We just want to be sure it does.
They made a party table and the faircy had a sponsor.
They weren't a responsible party.
The money just had to go, right?
Trying not to set in the mind of May and hoping that I need to, hoping.
Yeah, there's accountability.
Oh, no, it's going to be coming full.
Can I ask a question too? Do you know what kind of vegetation is in the channel at this point? I'm concerned about invasives, that's all.
I don't know specifically what, you know, when that was studied or if there, if that information was available. The Lakes St. Catherine Association provided me some insights into the required permits. They are really, really good at managing the lake and penmanship and that kind of thing. So if that is available, I can see how to find it, but I don't know what's in there right now.
Okay. And perhaps Hillary Solomon might be able to help you with the shoreline plantings. Yep, that sounds great. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion? Do you want a motion tonight? If you'd like.
If you're willing.
Second?
I would second that.
A couple's in favor? Thank you. Thanks for coming. I think it's going to be great. It's a big thing to do, me. She was also, I was talking to Nicole, she was also at the ski, at Killington when I was at skiing and I'm sure and they were jam packed and people were talking about it. I was like, everyone, Pauline!
He also took her with Skyship Lodge in about three weeks.
Yeah, I know. It was great, yeah. People were very happy with you.
Sarah, how about, why would you say that channel is?
Oh, why?
Yeah.
Depends on where you are.
We can go look at any.
Yeah, I'm nice and quiet. Number thirty feet.
Right, it's in ten feet, it's thirty feet. I do go down about half, but.
It's pretty small.
With the big, the funky.
So you want to widen it to like the maximum, like thirty feet?
Thirty feet is that is why, why?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You're not going to take motorboats down there?
Well, and that, those types of things will be really controlled by the state, by the Environmental Commission about how much they let us, uh, us do. It will be substantially wider.
Okay, I'll hear it. We talked about it today. I give a little motorboat and we offer delivery on the way.
It's pretty narrow.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but once it gets raked out, then it's about. I'm sure it's short. Could be chosen.
Thank you, Sarah.
There's nothing on the other side. There's no development.
Well, the back, they did right, we'll just do that.
Well, the guy that did the development, you know, he chopped up a little land. He just created a big clam shell to come in and make.
When was that channel originally created?
Well, Eddie's was there in the fifties, I know that. And beyond that, that wasn't here. Probably, probably like in twenty to thirty.
It's like, like Ray's grandfather did the whole end of the lake down in Wells, Sam Jones.
Right, okay, yeah.
And a lot of that was manmade too.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And the manmade areas start to show their way on there.
Thirty-two feet wide.
So it shows in this place?
It's like the average. If you measure it off, if you measure the width, the average width of the maps, you get about thirty-two feet. But there's, there's choke points there a little bit narrower.
Well, thank you, Sarah. I'm sure you'll get back to us.
I will.
Is there a deadline that you have to have it?
Uh, December fifteenth, so you won't see me for a few weeks.
Hopefully the internet's up.
Yes.
December fifteenth. It could be a Christmas present. Anything else you'd have some comments? Emergency report.
I don't have my, but you have, um, we've got, we've got to do the Rutland Emergency Management Committee Reappointment Form. Naturally, I'm the Emergency Management Director and Aaron Kerber is the Emergency Management Director Designated if I'm not available. So someone wants to make a motion to sign that?
Hold there?
Sure. And I've got it teed up for you to sign right at the bottom. Cheryl? Um, I've got, a couple of the employees have asked me about the Christmas holiday, so I probably should discuss that.
It falls.
This is not my case, we don't know.
Christmas falls on a Monday.
So, uh, the employees get Christmas Eve off, which is on a Sunday. And usually if the, if the holiday is on a Sunday, you take the day off on a Monday. But in this case, Christmas is on the Monday. So.
Is it Friday or Tuesday?
Tuesday. Play with their toys they've got on Christmas.
The question is Friday or Tuesday?
Right, what do they, what does most people?
I know I talked with, um, and at the transfer station, I think we talked again, you said, just you, just.
Just going to do it.
Yeah, okay.
So you'll take Friday, you'll Friday off, so you'll. Yes, you know, so we'll take off Fridays.
Yeah.
Or Tuesday.
Well, the question is Friday or Tuesday. I mean, I think I've, I've heard, I haven't talked to every single employee, but I've heard preferences of what you had suggested is Tuesday.
Get toys for Christmas?
I don't see this.
Must be young.
He gets toys too.
It'll snow anyway.
Make a motion for Tuesday the twenty-sixth?
Um, I don't think, I don't think so unless you feel, thank you.
That's all right with your crew, Dan? Your small crew?
Yeah, it's all right with me.
We will have it Saturday. It worked nicely, Dan, putting the sign up there for, um, when you were closer to the sale, a lot of people commented. So you have to sign up there early, so that was good.
Good, thanks, Stephen.
I do know, um, sorry. Mark, it was brought up last time when you were here. Had you had any further conversations with Bill Lyle about the?
He said at, at this point, he'd be, he'd be a sprint time job, but he won't move.
Would we go have anybody else that we can get a testament from? Do you know?
It was pretty expensive, man. He did it by. By foot length. But even, but even more than the railings, the, the walkway up to the dumpster would be a lot cheaper.
Right, and did you talk to, um?
He says he builds them to state standards. Yes, stand, right?
No. That is no.
Right. Build for state standard. And this is only two feet, two, two steps high. So it's, it's approximately fourteen inches high. So I paced it off last time I was there. It would come out about seven feet.
So where are we pulling the park? Where are we pulling the park? It's going to start there and then go, that'll be back down?
Yes, it would, because people, as we get older, they have trouble with those two, those two stairs going up to the dumpster. And instead of maintaining these stairs, build a rampway that would, that would start about seventy feet out and go up there. This is fourteen inches high.
That's, where's the railing going to go? This is different than the railing.
It's totally separate now.
So this is two things, like, yeah.
Two things, yeah.
Does the donor give us a real code for that?
He said seven fifty. Right, I assume there'll be a railing there, you think? At least on, because on one side, we need a railing on one side.
Now, isn't that my understanding that all that decking and stuff belongs to Casella anyways? Because we rent that contractor? Another ones built it to start with?
I don't know that.
I know it did.
I wouldn't think it would come with decking, though.
But the, but the actual decking is functional.
It needs work. The screw is about pretty much broken out of the, so it needs some more stuff.
That's a good question to ask, though. I was, I wanted to get ahold of Casella's anyways. I was thinking of having them come to our meeting. And that, when you and I had this conversation about the transfer station and recycling, it blew me away and I think that people need to hear what's going on because, yeah, if people think they're recycling and we're not recycling, that's kind of defeats the purpose.
Because Casella still has to come down and fix the building or they hit it with the dumpster up.
I don't know if who, if Paul, maybe I can get them, get them them from you. We can set something up. Just because, that way we get the facts because we got to put something up there because everyone thinks they're, know sort of recycling, they're recycling, but if they're not, people need to know that, oh, yeah, you're putting that in there, but it's really not recycling.
Ninety percent of the posted trash.
That's exactly what I said. So that's why we need to have a conversation. There's a little sign up there.
I think this is a little bit beyond what we were. I, I don't want to encourage people to throw the recycling in the garbage.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that we need to have a conversation about it because I know we had talked about it, so. All right, APs, Paul? We'll get ahold of them and have a conversation about it if I know what we talked about, but.
All right, so what about the Mountland stuff? Should we go forward with this or? Because I do see people, you know, I'm there for five minutes every week, I'm sure they see a lot more people.
Yeah, we have some people that they can't navigate two stairs, I mean, they're just not able, like stop and block them.
Yes.
You can't do it.
Right.
At least for one instance.
I think we need to put a table, and we'll talk about it next time when everybody's here, I'd like to go up and just double check and see exactly what you're talking about, for me. Let someone else have to make a motion.
You, you need a real quote from Don too?
Well, he went down seven fifty for.
Made it on the back of the map, and you wrote seven fifty.
Yeah, you need to have a real, real, so it doesn't say, oh, and by the way, we had to do this, this and this, and this.
Eighteen, eight, 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 ramp.
Yeah.
Length, weight, rise.
Rise.
Feet.
Okay.
I'm looking for an estimate. See, see, Sarah?
For yourself?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else, Nicole?
I do have one quick executive session thing, I think it's going to be quick.
Frontline, you should plan.
Um, so at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, which was the twenty-first, last Tuesday, um, the, there was a presentation from Front Porch Forum, which was really fantastic about, um, ways for municipalities to use, or, uh, community leaders, civic leaders, not just, um, staff, uh, or select boards, but, uh, how to, how to interact with your community using Front Porch Forum. Um, I asked Jace of, uh, Front Porch Forum to send some follow-up materials, which I will share out with, um, the clerks, I think, and the town manager, and just some ideas on how to use that tool. Um, you can log on, you can create an account on Front Porch Forum that identifies you as a SLAC board member, or a town manager, or your role, so you can have a personal account and a municipal account. Um, it might be one way that you can start to help solve some of the issues with communication and website, um, you know, concerns that we've been hearing about, so. Um, I will send that out when I get it. Other than that, the Commissioners have been talking a lot about some, about regional, the regional plan updates, um, some state level planning around, uh, the future land use map, which, that, uh, the, um, organization that is, um, is essentially all of the planning commissions in the state of Vermont, have been putting together some, um, new materials, so that was a lot of the conversation there. Um, there was a roundtable at the end about the Otter Creek Communications Union Districts. Um, I did not know that, it sounds as though the, uh, C U D is selecting a contractor to begin the build out, uh, April twenty-four, yes. Yes, um, so this is quietly huge news. Um, I asked if they had, you know, made an announcement about the award and the, the award, I guess, you know, millions of dollars, I don't, I can't remember the exact figure, but, um.
Nine million dollars.
How many?
Nine million.
Nine million dollars. So.
Nine point eight.
Yeah, but, so it's, it's set to begin being built out next year. Um, and then the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting is this Thursday, Ethan will be presenting on roadway geometries, lane widths, and how those affect speeds. And, uh, will present some different approaches for town, village, town centers, and rural highways, to essentially calm traffic, it sounds like.
Thank you, Sarah, any questions for Sarah?
No, you mentioned the C U D. We had a very lengthy conversation yesterday, because we used to be eighteen towns in one union, but the northern town, Strong, West Haven, and a little bit of Castleton, they've been approached by Otello, by Otello, and they want them to build them out. So, we, Polley was slated to be at phase two, we, we, which meant another year or so. But right now, we're going to take, take, take a boat Wednesday night. And, um, it looks like we're going, hopefully, Polley's going to get enough money to build out all the way to Hampshire Hollow.
To Hampshire Hollow or Hampshire Hollow beyond?
Yes, to beyond, right, that's what I'm hoping.
What's it, you're hoping? No, put that down in writing, folks.
Don't put that in writing, but that's what I've been kind of led to believe, going to have Wednesday night.
Wednesday night, tell me Thursday morning.
Sorry, what's the C U D?
Huh?
It's the C U D.
The C U D is a Communication Union District, district that we joined over two and a half years ago.
With Castleton, Fairhaven, and that's just three of them?
Yeah, no, 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 this is eighteen towns.
Brandon.
Can we jump on with Castleton and Fairhaven when we?
Way back when, there's eighteen towns that joined the union. Yes. There, there's like seventeen, there's at least eighteen in the whole state, but all told, there, there's, there's like four hundred million dollars being pumped into this space for the high, for the high speed internet. Right, and so that's what we're doing, but, but luckily or unlucky, Polley is actually pretty well served by, by town parks, all except, well, yeah, you guys in town, huh?
That's right.
Nobody, nobody was here, this is. But because of that, we got put on phase two, to the fact, we'll be back in phase two.
But with all, with all the biking and all the stuff we have, we're not, we're not doing well, because if something happens on the mountain, bike camp or something, there's no way to make contact.
It's not, not going to affect that. This is strictly wired access, he houses, and sugar houses and stuff. Right, no, has nothing to do with cell phones, unless you are within seven or eight hundred feet.
Well, the cell phones are on Wi-Fi.
Yeah, for short little distances, very short.
Yeah, that's okay, all right. So keep us informed on Thursday maybe?
Hopefully, I have that. And that's where the C U D.
I didn't think it was that long ago, because Terry talked about it, I didn't think it was forever, it was like three, two years ago.
Yeah, we joined two and a half years, we're going with beans, they're beans, they are.
All right. Public comments are in concerns. Very soon.
I just have a question for Mark.
What's that?
Yeah, because you weren't here last week, um, Bill Lyle, and he's, he's also going to be doing guardrails, you know, the guardrails for the, that big dumpster that he was for furniture, so he's going to be doing that in addition to the ramp?
No, 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 he has nothing to do with the ramp.
Oh, yes.
And, and, and the board has not voted to hire him to do it.
Well, no, but he was the one that.
Yeah.
You had talked to.
Yes, yes, I thought, I thought.
So Bill Wa- Bill Lyle is supposed to be, or, or has talked about adding the guardrail to.
Yes.
With dumpsters.
Building the guardrail for the four.
There's four rails, oh, okay.
Four dumpsters.
And who's in charge of the ramp then?
Right, right, well, yeah.
Done this, thank you.
These are all like the code submissions.
Yeah, these are not, they're not in charge yet.
They're not in charge yet, yeah.
We're just getting information, bids from them, I'll make a decision.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or?
Taxpayers opinion, that's great that y'all are sponsoring the construction project.
There you go. It's going to have to do with the political process.
We're happy that you're here, Nicole, don't forget, worry about what Mark said. Yeah.
I'm kind of concerned about the health of my.
Can we, can we talk about that in the executive session?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other public concerns, comments? Um, board orders? Anyone want to, your motion to?
Motion, sorry, board orders.
That's second minutes?
I'll vote favor.
All favor.
You got that, Paul? Okay?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's perfect. Okay, we do have to go to the executive session. Be very, I'll see you tomorrow.